Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the North River Village Board meeting for Monday, July 19th, 2021 to order. You join me for a silent prayer meditation? All right, thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, roll. Call the row, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Gaitley.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Nedvedge.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
Great, thank you. Anybody here to trust the board? Audience comments at all right now? Okay. State your name and address.
Steve Newman. I'm the owner of Brother Chimp Brewing at 1059 West Orchard Road. First, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. It's my understanding that North Aurora has not made any decision about what's going to happen with the temporary outdoor seating that's been made available to businesses. As you may know, the number of the local, other local towns have already gone ahead and authorized that it will be in place until the end of the year, and I would like the village to consider doing the same for a number of reasons. First, while there currently is no indoor seating restrictions, that doesn't in fact make up for the 453 days that there were restrictions. And having this outdoor space gives businesses an opportunity to try and help recover from the lost revenues they had during that time. I would also say that while the restrictions are over, the pandemic is not completely done. In fact, recently in the news, they talked about Chicago possibly bringing back restrictions because of a rise in cases. There are also a number of people that are still not comfortable eating indoors. I know I have several customers that, you know, will just come into the brewery, you know, with a mask, get their beer, and still only use the outdoor seating. So it's pretty important for me to still be able to provide that space for them. The other thing I'd say is, you know, from all the comments I've heard, a couple of people said if there's anything good to come out of the pandemic, it's how much they've enjoyed having the outdoor seating. So, you know, I think it's been a very positively received by the community and something that should be considered with doing that. You know, the loss of my outside space right now would literally cost me thousands of dollars of revenue over the next few months. As you know, I was here earlier in the year and obtained a special use permit to put in a permanent beer garden in the back. Unfortunately, negotiations with the landlord have taken a lot longer on that than I anticipated, although last couple of days, great progress is made, and I'm actually hopeful of having a lease signed for August 1st. Even if that happens, it's still going to take a period of time for me to make the next door space usable and to also be able to build the beer garden, go through all the permitting process. You know, getting a contractor now, and I had them lined up beginning of the year, is going to be more difficult, so, you know, obviously, I'm hoping that I would be able to use that outdoor space for longer. Again, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Yeah, I have a question. So you're referring to the rear part of your store, right? The backend?
Both the rear and the front right now.
Okay. Front, so is the front part of the COVID-19 special, is that, or is that just the rear? Because I don't know if the, do you have it tented in front?
So what happens is under our current outdoor dining executive order, Brother Chimp has an outdoor eating area in the front and in the back. Both our order requires that they stay adjacent to their business, and it just says that they have to be in the parking lot adjacent. So it doesn't say that it can't be both, so he has it both. Where Steve and I, we spoke earlier today, where his concern I think lies is some towns, and we did verify Geneva and St. Charles have recently, St. Charles earlier this year and Geneva recently extended their outdoor dining provisions to the end of the year. Batavia is similar to us right now where it's by executive order. The concern without having an executive order date is every month it gets extended. So you never know what the actual deadline of the state will be on that executive order. So when it happens, we'll have to figure out a way to work with our businesses to let them, you know, slowly take their stuff down. So we're not going to tell them the same night that we hear the executive order, and so they have to clean up by tomorrow morning or anything. But we probably were planning to have that conversation with the board in the next couple of weeks, maybe in August, where we say, okay, if we don't know what the definitive date from the state will be, we should at least have an exit strategy that says, once the governor says the order's over, that business have 30 days or something like that to officially clean up their their outdoor area, and we have not had that conversation yet.
Well, we have, what, so July, August, September, October, four months? Let's just say we're on August. So we're looking at three months, right? Because probably not going to be outdoor in November, are they?
I actually did have quite a number of people outside in November and December. January and February, actually, the heaters just couldn't keep up with it. But, you know, I'm also hopeful that by that time I'll have been able to make use, have signed the lease and do the build out, so I'll probably be okay. But, you know, that's my situation. I would argue there are other small businesses that, you know, may still need it as long as they're able to have it.
Yeah, I'm, personally, I'm fine with that because we don't want to hurt small business in our town, and we've always been a business-friendly board. And I know the restaurants and bars have hurt through the pandemic, so.
Yeah, and unfortunately, amount of aid that different businesses have gotten has really varied a lot. I mean, you know, while I was able to get the Kane County grant, for example, I was not eligible for any of the PPP because of when I opened my business, I couldn't show losses. So, you know, and thankfully, honestly, the Kane County grant is what got me through January and February.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to speak? State your name and address and all.
My name is Maxine Pierce. My husband Doug Pierce. We live at 724 Thompson Avenue in the Chesterfield subdivision. The subdivision abuts the Dart Warehouse, which is located at 302 Mitchell Road. And my husband and I would like to talk about this warehouse. I know I have emailed some of you in this room, and I appreciate those that have helped us out. But we feel that it is important that the council is aware of what we, our neighborhood has endured for three months. Towards the end of April and 1st of May, we first started hearing increased activity at the warehouse. And by the end of May, the activity had escalated to the warehouse operating 24/7. The operation of the warehouse changed from a storage facility where goods are delivered and removed by tractor trailers to that of a truck line hub where trailers were dropped, sorted, and then reloaded for further transport. The noise went through the roof because every trailer that it uncouple needed to be recoupled and to a tractor at some point, and then that requires a tractor slamming into the trailer with sufficient force to securely lock the kingpin on the trailer to the latch on the tractor. It's very noisy. The switching tractor has a backup alarm that is 100 to 110 decibels. And it's going on and off all day long and all night long. So it's very hard to sleep with the noise. I've talked with many of the residents in the Chesterfield subdivision, and they are upset like we are with the change in the warehouse operation that has reduced our quality of life. The residents were eager to sign a petition, so I accommodated them and got a petition up. So I'd like this to be filed. Okay, so I did contact Mr. Toth on, I think, June 2nd. And he immediately looked into the situation, and he agreed that this warehouse activity was a nuisance to the residents in our area, and he spoke with the owners and tenants on June 29th. After this visit, the noise did abate somewhat, but we were still aware of activities 24/7, of all of their activities. So on July 12th, Mr. Toth told me that the tenants would be moving out in August. So it's my hope that we can prevent this occurring again going down the road because there will always be new tenants, there may be new owners, and we don't, the neighbors don't want to have to go through this. I talked to many of them, and it was all the same story, and you could just see they were just really tired of this noise. So since the 12th, my husband has been monitoring the activity, and I'll let him speak now.
Excuse me. I set up a security cam just so that we can monitor the activities at the warehouse 24/7 and get an idea of how many trucks are coming and going. I have 24 hours worth of data here for July 17th. And I didn't pick this date in particular, it was just a day where I had a full 24 hours of monitoring. During that period of time, there were 98 tractor trailers that came and left the facility. There were 45 tractors that came in or left during that period of time. During the period of nine o'clock at night to six o'clock in the morning, there were 20 tractor trailers during that period of time and 23 tractors that came in. They're using switch tractors right now, I think, to take material off-site. But this is still quite a bit of activity, even though the noise is somewhat abated. I also looked in the videos that the security camera took and recorded, or I mean, I noted when there were noises that happened, what type of noises they were. Most, some of them are, as Maxine referred to, is when they're latching a tractor to a trailer, it's very noisy. I'll give you an indication of that from one of the videos, just the noise from there. Sorry. And that's a where the yard switch truck latched.
What time was that, at night?
That particular one was not at night. But that happened within, that's probably close to the house. But that occurs at night. So.
Let's see those photos. Thanks.
We got to hear that. So so, of course, we have the concern with these noise and with the trailers. And there was only one row of trees, but the houses are two-story as well. So of course, we're way up above. So there really needs to be a more effective berm, better tree buffering. They do have some ornamental trees, but they're really in full foliage about four months out of the year versus we would need it 12 months out of the year.
So one of the issues that was covered during the permitting phase was line of sight. Right now, from my back back door, I can see into the docks, even though there is a little bit of, there is a berm there, it's about three feet high. I think still have direct visual into there. When trucks come out of the, out of the loading yard, their lights shine our house, neighbor's house, I mean, it goes, all of the neighbors are affected by this. Secondarily, when the wind blows, all the deciduous trees and the fixed fixtures, you get flashing of light all night long. So it's, one of the things that needs to happen is more trees. Place the ones that died or replaced before, double up on them so that you get get more depth for noise abatement.
So I do have another picture here because this now shows, this is the edge of our subdivision, and then this is the edge of the north entrance road. So this is the clearing, which is a nicore gas easement.
Yeah, we can, thanks.
I paced it. I think this is 55 of my feet. From my back door to the edge of the property, to the nicore gas easement, that was 55 of my steps. So if you add another 65, we are about 120 feet next to this north entrance road. So what, I don't know who did this. They also have a south entrance road. The south entrance has the entry and it has the exit. This is all fenced off. It's got trailers all parked along it. So the one scary thing is if there was ever to be an evacuation due to an emergency, they only have the north road. Now, I'll show this picture too, since I'm kind of talking about it. They were parking their trailers, storing the trailers on the north road as well as using the, the other one that shows double park.
What road is that, North Road?
Mitchell.
Oh, okay.
So then we had trailers stored on each side of the road. Plus, that north road is the only road they're using. So then you've got the employees using the road.
You're talking about their driveway, not Mitchell Road, their driveway, north side?
I say road, but it's basically the north entrance. But they have a south entrance that they have out there stopped. So that's a concern as well because they are very close to the residents. We hear the trailers coming in, we hear the, I guess it's the hydraulics shutting down, we hear them starting up. And in the winter, when it was cold, if they were sleeping in the cab, then it was running all night long. So we have that issue to deal with as well. And I think a sign needs to be put up on the north entrance stating it's for automobiles only and no semi-trucks. So we, okay.
It would be very helpful if most of the activity at the warehouse, they have trucks coming and going would be from the south entrance. And unloading, I'm only, excuse me, loading and unloading that involves switch trucks, if they can be on the south side of the warehouse. It would also be helpful because the more distance you get between the noise and residential area, the lower it's going to be, sound attenuates about square of the distance, so it's, it would make a
Okay, so then we go back to where they're operating 24/7. And so we were definitely aware of 2:00 AM activity, 3:15 AM activity, 4:30 activity, that was a good one to watch. Two semi-trucks are just back-to-back roaring down the road or the lane. And then pretty soon another one came through at 4:30. So we were really living on four to five hours of sleep each night. And it's not just us, it was neighbors too that also made the comment. So the other issue is the lights. A lot of the neighbors mentioned that the lights were shining into their homes. So one neighbor is an electrician. He said, you can get a shield to point the lights down to the parking lot. So that would be really helpful as well.
You're talking about the parking lot lights?
On the building? Yeah, they're on the building. Yes.
Now, was it, can I ask you, was this, was there a tenant before this group in there before, and was that better? They take it, or?
It was better because it was warehousing.
There we go.
The trucks would come in and unload their cargo.
Yeah.
They would never unlatch. Backup alarms going off, very quiet.
We didn't notice until towards the end of April. And I do want to thank Mr. Toth and Marcy and and whoever else was involved with helping to talk to the owners and the tenants. I understand they will be moving out, but then again, we have to look forward to how to not have this repeated again. And I'm really sorry I have to bring this one up too because it's kind of old news. But it's the public notice ordinance where it's, as I visited with the neighbors, so many of them said, we've been here 20 years, we are the first-time homeowners. We had no clue this warehouse was going to be built. We're first-time homeowners too with that subdivision. We had no clue. So as I looked at the ordinance 3.4, it states that the applicant needs to post a sign 15 days before. They need to send a letter or hand-deliver a letter to the residents so that we have sufficient notice. So we did not have this notice. And I have a letter from an attorney back in 2013 when another incident or another, the Lafarge wanted to, I think, increase its space. This attorney told us that we didn't even know about it till it was in the newspaper. And then he found out the posting was a mile and halfway, and the letters went to a keel box. So that kind of tells me that maybe there isn't a due diligence list between the applicant and the village to make sure that things are being, you know, that the ordinances are being followed correctly. So I, you know, I thank you for letting us speak tonight and letting us share what we've lived. But I've gotten to know the neighbors, and, you know, they're just really good neighbors. But so many of them just looked at me and said, why is this happening? So, so thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank you. You know, we certainly understand your plight. And I might have staff kind of fill us in on the timeline and things that they've been working on as well, Steve?
Sure. As far as the complaint, the residents are correct. The property is being misused for outdoor truck storage, and that is what is driving the noise. The staff believes that's true 100%. The, we visited several times with the property owners, made site visits. Mike and I personally saw the trucks there and met with the owners of both the business and the tenant. So we met with an executive for the tenant, which is Dart Logistics. The property owner, which is Prologis, met with them, and it seems like what happened was Dart was operating out of there for a long time with no issues, but took on an additional client. Have adequate space for where they apparently wanted it, so they just started parking trucks and trailers and operating out of there at the Mitchell site. And we have told them that they're in violation of that. They have acknowledged that. We've given them a compliance period. They said they would have everything moved off the lot by August 15th. We are prepared with our village attorney to seek other remedies if that doesn't happen. We have heard that it is starting to slowly get better, and we anticipate it to get better between now and August, and we will continue to go out there and verify that the trucks are starting to reduce.
Question I have is the all-hours of night activity is, could that be addressed?
So the question about noise at night is our code doesn't, it doesn't say that you can't operate at night. And there's no provisions that I'm aware of when that was approved for that site that said they could not operate at night. We have noise limits in our noise ordinance. Industrial properties have a specific decibel limit that they're allowed to operate under, which I think is 65 decibels at any given time. I'm not sure if beeping of a truck would even meet that 65 decibels. So the issue really becomes, and to the point of the residents, it's the truck activity that's driving everything. The fact that they're parking the trucks there and then coming at night, beeping, backing up, dropping trailers, picking them up, that seems to be the root of the issue. So what we're trying to do is, is, you know, basically go to the root and remove the trucks. And hopefully that gets better. All the other things about berms and lighting are all things that are typically addressed during the approval process for a property of that. Mike, I don't know, do you know if anything was in any of the provisions regarding that when it was approved?
Yeah, I mean, the property was in bad shape. I've not, I've not seen a property operator like that in my career, to be quite honest with you, which is why we took immediate action with the property owner. We actually had the executive vice president from Dart fly out from Los Angeles to meet with us. And I don't think it took them long to take a look at the site and realize that there was a problem there. So his immediate response was, we're going to move this newer client out of a facility and into a facility in Naperville. But we just need a little bit of time to get this prepared. You know, and in doing so in that process, there was talks about a ramp-down period. But we were also told that the nighttime noise and the early morning noise was a result of accommodating that particular client. You know, the fact that they had to bring so much commodity in and out at certain times to basically make the site function, that that activity escalated at that time during that client. And they, we were told by the operations staff that that was the reason why they were operating during those, basically a 24-hour clock. So we're, the anticipation being that, once that client is fully out, that it would go back to, you know, business as normal. One of the other things, you know, factors in all this is when Liberty sold their assets to Prologis. So when I, this came up before, I think in 2015, I dealt with a similar issue with a different, with a different tenant and with a different property owner. We would resolve the issue within, you know, a good amount of time. But now that we have a new property owner, it's sort of, you know, gaining an understanding of how this site is to operate. You know, we did put them on official notice for the outdoor storage trailers. And as Ms. Pierce has indicated, that there is a lot of activity associated with the actual movement of those trailers and hitching, unhitching, and that sound and movement and the light trespass. So we're fully prepared to kind of move quick if they're not, you know, in compliant at that date. But they had indicated that they would be ramping down slowly to get to that date. So it's not like it's just going to stop at that date. They're going to slowly get to the August 15th date.
Can we do anything with the dead trees and things?
Yeah, so there are a few dead trees on that north area. We've already put them on notice. We've already worked with the property owner, who's actually their landscape. Company's already reached out to us. Company's already reached out to us, we had suggested the use of evergreen trees for any sort of, you know, where there's void. The use of evergreen trees being a year round screening element, so that, there are a couple, they're sort of more on the north. Be the northwest tree line here that are missing, so we actually do have them on notice for, maybe have like a couple of weeks left to get those trees installed.
Did they, I mean, did they put enough in when they developed the site, you know, I mean, were they, whatever the?
Yeah, we had, we had Tesca, the villages planning, they actually had them review the screening. You know, and we'll keep an eye on any, any trees that are dying because that, unfortunately that does happen, but there was a small crop, probably three or four trees missing. Along the, would be the northwest corner of that property.
And think we get them to put a shade over the light or some, something that so it doesn't shine at people's houses?
Yeah, we can certainly look into that, we do have codes that require that, so I can review the code and what's, what's out there and take a look at that for sure.
Very good. Is, is there anything with this next group that would come in, they use that south lot, I mean, that does seem logical to keep away from the residents and. Use what they can, you know. I know they have a business to run, but you know, there's also being a good neighbor and, and trying to coexist, you know, so. I don't know if that's something we can, you know, strongly suggest that they try to folk, you know, whatever they can on the south side, I think that would be.
Yeah, you know, the, the property itself, there is the north and the south entrance. It, like I said, there's not a requirement that says they have to use one or the other, but, you know, when you look at the way the sites were designed, the designs were designed to have a building behind that as well. Which I've not been told by the company there's any plans on building that property to the west there, but they would kind of work in unison using both, both access drives. We had an issue in two thousand fifteen with idling trucks, parking trucks, I mean. We had to work pretty extensively with the police department because we had trucks that were even parked and idling on, on Mitchell Road, so. You know, with that, they had no idling signs put up on the, the North Drive aisle there, that say you can't, you can't hard own that area within a certain time.
Is there a way to spot check like, you know, a year from now, or do we, like with these other warehouses, the. So we don't wait till there's five hundred somebody's parked in the lot as our way to, that we can go around and check?
Yeah, you know, as we, as we have more and more warehouse development, it's something that actually. Will be a little more proactive, and this site is a little different, the fact that it's on the municipal boundary, so it's not someplace we really get down to unless there's a reason to. But, you know, now that we've been alerted by the neighborhood, we've definitely been going there almost every day.
Do we have no idling signs there?
Yeah, there's no idling signs, this is a few of them, I don't think they removed them when they do. Owners took up, there are a couple of no idling signs on the north access drive there, because that was part of the. Problem too originally was they had trucks just kind of staging there.
Stay there overnight and run.
Can you address the notice about the notice that was mailed out, or what's, how does that work?
So, this, this development was a little before my time, I, you know, I came on in two thousand thirteen, around two thousand seven, I believe it was. There was subdivision plan approved, I think in two thousand nine, there was a site plan approved, I mean, I'm not sure at that time that it was, these uses are permitted uses, warehousing, it's a permitted use, so I'm not sure. If the zoning, if a zoning hearing was needed at that time, it could have been a permitted use, but. You know, in any case, that was, I was kind of, came to the tail end of this building here and went through the permitting process. So we don't notify for the permit unless there's some sort of zoning action needed. But their improvements, the improvements were in the ground for quite some time, and I'm not quite sure how long, but.
Well, I feel you moved pretty fast on this, I mean, it seemed like that. We meant updated weekly, if not more about the process and hopefully, what was the date, August fifteen?
August fifteenth is the draft, the draft date.
That one will be cleared up?
Yeah, the, you know, the main, the main emphasis is we, you know, as opposed to taking an approach of just going after acute sound ordinances. You know, we wouldn't go directly at the problem itself, you know, and, and having gone through this once already, I was, you know, quite taken back myself and a little upset that the site was act, you know. It was functioning in, in that regard, so we took action pretty quick. And, and dealing with the, both the property owner and the operator, because the property owner in the day is responsible for their, their business tenants.
Okay, well, thank you, we'll. Keep monitoring that and.
We'll keep in touch with the residents as well, and we did notify as part of what we were doing last week when we sent the letter to. Reiterate our conversation with the property owner and then sent them the violation letter to make sure they knew exactly what the, the terms were. We did make the H O A of Chesterfield, their president aware as well, just so in case they get resident questions. And we've had probably three or four other residents call or email us, and so we try to give them a response to and let them know where we're at. But we'll definitely keep up with Ms. Pierce and, and let, make sure she knows where we're at as this goes on.
Very good.
All right, thank you, anybody else, any other audience comments, questions? All right, seeing none, consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Clear color roll, please.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
All right, on the new business, item one, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is approval of an ordinance approving the first budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. This ordinance would effectively authorize the finance director to transfer. Funds in the Sperry Tiff and North Lincoln Way Tiff to the Route thirty-one Tiff Fund under the state's Tiff portability. Statute for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear roll, please.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, item two, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, the next six items are actually associated with the adoption of the North Aurora United Tax Increment Financing District. The first three involve the area which was formerly the Route thirty-one Tiff. So basically what we're doing is part of the United Tiff is we're maintaining the Route thirty-one Tiff south of I eighty-eight. Which you can see there in the magenta color when it was up there, and all the properties in the Route thirty-one Tiff district are being removed. From the Route thirty-one Tiff district, we will be dissolving the Sperry Tiff, which is North Aurora Village Hall property, the property to the north. As well as the North Lincoln Way Tiff, which consists of the properties on the east side of Route thirty-one between Route, Route thirty-one and the river there. So we're actually dissolving those two tiffs, removing the Route thirty-one properties, Route thirty-one Tiff properties north of eighty-eight. And we'll be adding some properties as part of the consideration of the United Tiff. So the first ordinance for consideration is the ordinance designating surplus Tiff funds and terminating the North Lincoln Way Project Tiff area. Which is basically dissolving the North Lincoln Way Tiff, which is the area on the map right there and shown in green.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear roll, please.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Okay, item three, Mike.
Item three is approval of an ordinance designating surplus Tiff funds and terminating the Sperry Tiff redevelopment project area. The Sperry Tiff was the, is the property, it consists of Village Hall and the property to the north. Which is shown on the map in the, I can't really see it from there, but it's dissolving that Tiff to make way for the United Tiff.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
All right, thank you, item four, Mike.
Item four is approval of an ordinance removing parcels from the North Aurora Route thirty-one Taxman Financing District. Again, any property that's currently in the, in the Route thirty-one Tiff district, which is north of eighty-eight is going to be removed. So that is the, what this ordinance is doing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, item five, Mike.
Yeah, so the next three ordinances pertain to the adoption of the. Tax Increment Allocation Act Fund for the United Tiff District, so. The next three ordinances required per the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act for the adoption of the North Aurora United Tiff. Tax Increment Financing District, as you recall, the village, we held the public hearing for this item on June twenty-first. So the first ordinance for consideration defines the North Aurora United Tiff redevelopment project area, the boundaries of which are found in Exhibit B in the approving ordinance and legally described in Exhibit A. So it would be the ordinance designating the North Aurora United Tiff redevelopment project area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Okay, Mike, item seven.
Number.
I'm sorry, item six.
Item six is approval of an ordinance approving the North Aurora United Tiff redevelopment plan and project. The second ordinance for consideration adopts the North Aurora United Tiff redevelopment plan and project, this document is intended to provide a framework for improvements and reinvestment within the project area over the next twenty-three years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mike, item seven.
I'll take number, number seven, Mr. Mayor, item number seven is adoption of tax increment financing for the United Tiff redevelopment. Area, this, this ordinance essentially authorizes the creation of the North Aurora United Tiff redevelopment special tax allocation fund. And adoption of tax increment financing for the redevelopment district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
All right, thank you, item eight, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eight is an ordinance approving a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with North Aurora Industrial Venture LLC. This is the incentive request from Opus for the I eighty corporate business park. And as you, as you may recall, we had a discussion at the committee of the whole when the draft was almost completed. This is the final version for approval now that the Tiff increment, or excuse me, the Tiff. United Tiff District has been officially established just now, so this is the incentive request that is roughly three point nine, three one million dollars. This is a seventy-five percent annual payback until that amount is paid back, and that is through the increment generated from the, the E A V of the building. And the committee of the whole discussion had a few concerns last time, and we wanted to just go over them quickly. So one of the concerns was the right to terminate, and we want to clarify that the agreement does allow us. To terminate the incentive agreement if they A, don't build the building within the first three years. Or B, don't pull a mask grading permit within the first year, so we do have protections and, and the termination ability. The second thing is there was some discussion of, and, and I think there was some confusion, so to clarify, there was some, some worry that if the building should. Call it whatever you want, a disaster, it should collapse, whatever, and, and. Would we, you know, would there be risk to the village for the obligation to pay back the incentive? And I think the board realized at the end after the conversation came back full circle that. The incentive is driven by the building itself, so the village isn't out any money, we're only reimbursing money that's generated by the actual. Increment created by the building, so if the building goes away. True, we don't get any money from that building to the Tiff District, but we would also not be reallocating any money to the business themselves because it's all tied to the building being built. So that issue I think was resolved, and the third issue was some question about. The property upkeep and what happens if the owners per se should, should leave, if they decide to sell off the building, but they maintain the incentive. What is our way of ensuring that they'll always upkeep the property? And the short answer is the village has municipal codes that, no matter who owns the building, we can enforce code. Codes of, you know, landscaping like we just talked about, or trucks on the property, we can assess fines and whatnot. But to go one step further, their attorney and Kevin actually did come up with some language. That allows us in the event that they don't comply with our codes, while they're still in the payback period. That if they refuse to or don't do it in a timely manner, that we can then hold back the amount of money. That we use to remedy that situation or the fines if they're not paying them, and we can hold that back from the payment until everything is made whole.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, item nine, Steve.
Thank you, item nine is the increase of a Class B liquor license, and this is for the new business, New New Cafe, which wants to open on Ritter Street, they're in that multi. Mixed juice development where it's apartments on top and right by the turf room.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, item ten, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, item number ten is an ordinance approving the updated site plans for the property located at one fifty-one South Lincoln Way. In two thousand twenty, the village board approved the site plan, also the special use associated with utility, which is the Fox Metro Pump Station located. That would be east of Route thirty-one and on the west rank of the Fox River. The plan included a pump station which would take access to the south of the property along the trail, they would have banned and demolished eventually the Krieger's pump station. They since included updated plans, which are included in the packet, I've actually included the original plans and the updated plans for the visual. They reconfigured the plans, what they're looking to do now is take access to the north of the property, they've shifted the building slightly. They've actually done some cosmetic work to the building that would allow it to blend more naturally into the landscape. And also too, you know, just from some general, the buildings being, building smaller, there are no setback issues, so there's really nothing that constitutes a zoning review or further approval. Or an actual intensification of the use, so there was no need to go back through the public hearing process, which we had done last year. But more or less just getting consensus from the village board on the updated site plans, Fox Metro is here tonight to answer any questions you guys might have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
All right, thank you, item eleven, Dave.
Chief. Thank you, Mayor, staff is seeking authorization to purchase emergency lighting equipment for the new patrol vehicles, a couple meetings ago, the board approved the purchase of four. Squads, this is the equipment for the four squads, the lowest quote came in from Minor Corporation. In the amount of forty-two thousand, six hundred and six dollars, we've worked with Minor for several years and they've done excellent work. A lot of the stuff that are in the squads is transferred over, so this is just basically the new stuff that we would have to buy, the budgeted amount is fifty thousand, eight hundred, so it came in well under that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear color roll.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, item last, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, approval of an authorization to purchase a new code enforcement vehicle from suburban purchasing cooperative in the amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. We're looking to buy a brand new two thousand twenty-one Ford Escape for the Code Enforcement Division to replace the two thousand nine Chevy Colorado. As part of the current fiscal year, we've had a budget amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, so we actually are just slowly below budget for the vehicle itself. We did look into the state bid process, the municipal collaborative and also a local vendor. The actual suburban, suburban purchasing cooperative was the lowest quote at twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. This price is actually being held for us right now, it actually had expired, but we had spoke with them, they agreed to hold it because it had gone through the next cycle, it would have been more expensive and most likely not even available. Given the chip shortage, so we've done a fairly amount of research and I want to thank Public Works for their assistance in the acquisition of the vehicle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clear color roll.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
All right, thank you, village president report, I don't have anything, trustee comments?
I have a question, or actually a concern for the chief, I was driving the other day right here by the village hall. And somebody was coming down the hill on. Route fifty-six, and as I'm coming, they were flying down. And as I'm coming, they were flying down as I'm coming around the curb and almost hit me head on at a high rate of speed. Is there something we can do to make people aware? I mean, he was just going straight over by the, the Napa?
Yep.
I mean, just right through. I mean, I, I could see the whites of his eyes, literally, that, that close of a call. And the more I thought about that, is there just some way we can maybe make that turn a little bit safer for people who may not be familiar with this whole convoluted, uh, intersection?
Um, I'm, I'm sure there is something, whether it's signage, uh, it, it would almost have to be signage. I mean, we can't reconfigure the road or anything. I, I, that, that being a state route though, it, it's not up to us to put that. I would have to get in touch with, uh, with I dot and, and, you know, voice the concerns over something like that. It, it is weird. I mean, it's, I, I agree because if anybody's going to go straight down Grant Street down there, yeah, there's, there's a good chance they're going to cut somebody off if they don't pay attention.
I'd rather see us be proactive, um, just because, I mean, the entire intersection, when you go up here and come down, I mean, it just, if, if you're not familiar with the intersection, I can see how.
Yeah, it's convoluted. I see people pull into the, if they're going up the hill, I see people pull into the, what would be the turn lane and end up going straight. I, I, I see a little bit of everything up, up, up along there, up at the top and down on the bottom. So.
It's almost like Grant Street, you do not enter from coming, from coming from the east going west.
Yeah.
It's like that or something.
I'll, I'll talk to, one of the officers has pretty good traffic experience with, um, that kind of thing. Plus it's with I dot and they're engineers and, you know, maybe we can come up with something. Uh, that's the best I can answer right, right now.
Make you aware of it because, you know, I've got young kids driving.
Sure, anybody, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? All right, administrators report.
I'm happy to report the air conditioning is working tonight.
It's working great. It's like minus.
Like a refrigerator in her meat locker holding his jacket.
As, uh, Steve Newman from Brother Chimp was here earlier, I just bring up again, I, I plan to bring something to the board in August about outdoor, just so we have that outdoor dining endpoint, so we at least have a end game. So I know exactly how to address businesses should the executive order, um, go away or if the board wants to look at different options, we should, we can have that conversation. Um, other than that, the only other thing I wanted to, uh, update everybody on was that we, after several months and a lot of staff work and, and Kevin Drendel, uh, a lot of attorney work, we finally closed on Nineteenth South Lincoln Way, which was a long process. But we just acquired, and so now we're preparing some thoughts on the, the next steps for those properties for the board to review. And that's a wrap. Thank you.
Village Department reports.
I was going to mention that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All fair and say aye.